Madam Chair, I have six thirty PM and to the best of my knowledge, all five board members are on the line, so we could begin the meeting.
Thank you very much. Good evening everyone, welcome to the floor and I will take the place of the chair. I plan to lead the fire of the United States of America and to the recently from Washington, Columbia, Oregon, Indiana, Tennessee and Denver for all. Welcome to everybody that's on the phone with me. With that, roll call Mr. Lundberg.
Call.
Yes.
Forty.
Yeah.
Forty. Over. Yes. Lover.
Yes.
Oh God.
Yeah.
Thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda at the time of the move without the fact whoever raised the motion, just name your name afterwards, no second thing. Uh, who is the question?
I am Ovi.
There are no questions in our question. Hold on a little bit.
Jackson.
Yeah.
Forty.
Yeah.
Lover.
Yeah.
Chaka.
Yeah.
Hello.
Yes. Thank you. There are no complaints of interim commander or main coordinator class to review tonight. Also that takes us to approvals and the next term of the regular meeting watching for fourteenth and January twenty seventh. And we entertain a motion to approve those for then today.
I'll move over. Dr. Johnson.
There's been no further questions. Roll call Mr. Lundberg.
Hello.
Yeah.
Lover. Chaka.
Yeah.
Yeah. Backer.
Yeah.
Hello.
Yes. Thank you very much. Um, little community of course, tonight on a higher differently. That takes us to our financial item, though, and waiting for you longer.
Okay, I entertain any questions, any board members have kind of a big split of bill and things with this submitted with this agenda during during all the stuff that we have planned out, but expenditures are now considerably in the month of May. I would point out one in P Street, I talked to Jared a little bit earlier about when teams were really seeing every action and expenditure would be, will be in P Street, Surbilly Energy, electricity bill, this is a dollar, it's around seventy-five thousand dollars a month paid, as you can see, it's fixed four thousand dollars. Four total bills of claims of five hundred fifteen thousand six hundred and one. There was, uh, there were two separate pay box for here this one, one was titled, uh, April, these were pay boxers and now they started in the time of the last four B and probably found very important getting paid with, uh, all the COVID stuff going on, the line of payroll, a lot of people suddenly had to take these in April, so she approved all, it's going to happen to the fact that the third to three hundred and forty-one dollars paid, offering for last month, and then twelve thousand five hundred and twelve on this month in May, and then food service bill of forty seven thousand.
Any questions for Mr. Lundberg on the Delta plane? Here we now have a motion to approve the other question. Who is the question?
Dr. Johnson.
There are no questions in the second, roll call Mr. Lundberg.
Backer.
Yeah.
Chaka.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Forty. Yeah.
Hello.
You. Well, just happy, thank you. That takes us to that is another. What is that? That takes us to the financial report, Mr. Lundberg, whenever you're ready.
Hi, I'm getting that, just a second, I'll start with the cash report of the month of April. We had twenty-two million, about two hundred sixty-nine thousand coming in, three million one hundred forty-three thousand dollars received, and two million nine hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars expenditures. We have twenty-two million, six hundred forty, fifty-four thousand at the end of April. Five million, six hundred seventy-four thousand with the general fund, one hundred fifty-five thousand with capital outlay fund, twelve thousand with special education fund, fifty-four thousand in pension fund, seventy-five thousand in the enterprise fund, and just under sixteen one four million in capital projects left. The three million one hundred forty-three thousand is itemized on the next two pages. Yes. There are no national reports, team unit eight hundred ninety-two thousand, April over four, just under two million, one ninety-nine hundred fifty-six thousand. Any questions, comments, remarks, any strong? If not, we continue on with, uh, financial segments, first two pages of the revenue reports, everything is, maybe continuing pretty much in line with, uh, where we are last year at the time, we're primary from our A bank. We go over there. Then we get into the expenditure reports, our general fund, what it's like, sort of tied up with, uh, co- who did the senior team, uh, strength cancer, our capital expenditures, as I mentioned last week, and probably prior to that, that we were just being, uh, general fund to be right at a hundred percent or even a little above. So I made some notes that, uh, the general fund, potentially was, literally like, made a sixty thousand dollar total budget, starting to be a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars under budget, so in the area of, uh, two, uh, just under a quarter million dollar spend, COVID expenditures. It should come in about ninety-nine point four percent of the budget this year, when projected to be down after, during your, that's a little bit, yeah, being a little difficult to tell, but not going polish, so they'd be affected by COVID nineteen, but in that area, pretty big sweat, uh, two hundred fifty thousand of that. Uh, are there any wonders or? Go ahead. Questions? Well, we're in, we're pretty much in line, uh, special education, but, um, tiny difference of, uh, of the age quarter, well, up in the corner, maybe done last year to this year, which stayed in a different corner last year, uh, so percentages are a little different, uh, should be running in line with bunches there, uh, food service statement, it's showing an accrue then also about sixty-five thousand dollars, just wanted a little bit more control. They're objective, the COVID nineteen is, uh, half dated, their expenditure is better. Standard, I guess, also one of the losses, doesn't matter how much, I guess it's probably looking, yeah, we have fifty thousand dollar loss, or so maybe less than that, I'm quite sure, my rate of margins rates are, are doing pretty good, so somewhere in that area, nothing to be fully alarmed with, as I told the director. This is kind of a time when we have unbalanced, so we're standing there, this time, let's say, the capital projects fund is next, those one ninety-five hundred seventy thousand dollars expenditures through April, we're trying to place the trust agency, five hundred sixty-six thousand, six hundred dollars. Any questions, not many, either, Steven?
Any questions, Mr. Lundberg? All right, here we go. I would entertain a motion to approve financial report, this is the head of the last page.
Forty, don't move. Sorry, lover.
There's no, here's, there's no first. Roll call Mr. Lundberg.
Forty.
Yeah.
Lover.
Yes.
Chaka.
Yeah.
Jackson.
Yeah.
Hello.
Yes. Thank you, well, just happy, thank you very much. Mr. Lundberg, for all your work on that. That takes us to a general business item, and I'll point to everyone under the financial report, uh, paper and then order.
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair, a few items to update you on here this evening. Uh, first and foremost, our elementary school construction project is, uh, it's progressing along, I would tell you that dirt work and is in progress. Uh, was down on the site this morning and the concrete crews are, uh, onsite, beginning to firm up the footings and, uh, that work progresses, uh, as long as the, the weather holds out, I would imagine we will see concrete being poured, uh, here this, early this week and, um, the dirt work will continue as well, so that's progressing along. Uh, would note that the collaborative, uh, development expense agreement with the city of Sioux Falls, uh, in conjunction with the playground park area is in progress, I anticipate having, um, an MOU for that at our June Board of Education meeting, um, so that's just an item to, uh, an item to note, but is coming as we, um, we do the preliminary or the, the work, um, and then they reimburse us for those related expenses, uh, so that is, uh, that's coming here on June eleventh. Um, I hope to have our meeting facilities committee, uh, get to work here this summer as, as, um, meetings allow, as social distancing and, uh, the situation allows for us to have small groups come together. Uh, the line commence here this, uh, this fall to, uh, talk about what exact boundaries we want to tweak with this new elementary school online, with it open in the, um, fall of 2021. So, um, overall, on, on, uh, on timeline, uh, it's progressing along well at this point in time. Budget process, I guess before we, uh, before we get into our preliminary budget presentation here a little later, we just know that this has been many months, um, coming and we appreciate all the work for our administration, uh, so in the business office getting to the point where we're at, so, uh, started back in, uh, in December with five new planning documents and those types of things being assembled and we are now to the point where we only need to fund a very much. Uh, child nutrition services, just want to note our Lynx Lunch Express, the mobile feeding unit, uh, the mechanical upgrades are in progress and, uh, the visual art or the wrap of that bus is also in progress, so hope to have that finalized here, um, by both June. Want to send a special thank you to, uh, Bill Miller, uh, for emceeing our virtual Brenn Valley School District Employee Recognition banquet, as well as all the other individuals that helped make that possible. Uh, we celebrated retirement years of service and Brenn Valley School District Teacher of the Year, so congratulations to Mr. Jeremy Van Heel for being named the, uh, 2020 Teacher of the Year, and also a special thank you to all the people who went into making that event happen, given our current circumstances. Uh, quick update on the COVID nineteen cares act funding, uh, ultimately what that is for is that's for preventing, preparing for, responding to COVID nineteen, uh, focus on budgetary needs and start student learning recovery and advancement will be our emphasis. Uh, we are still in the process of evaluating, uh, the usage of those dollars and then, uh, recommendation for the expenditure of those dollars, uh, our estimated allocation is right in that two hundred and sixty thousand dollar range, uh, so certainly we'll have more information coming on that. And then lastly, or not lastly, but the COVID nineteen update, um, want to just, uh, remind, uh, everyone that we have grabbing, don't you still singly weekly, single, one single weekly distribution, uh, we plan to continue that strategy for the month of June, our principals will be communicating to our families in regards to, uh, the pickup of personal student items and also school equipment return here in the next couple of weeks as, uh, as we wind down. Uh, the 2020 graduation ceremony has been postponed to July nineteenth, you've got a backup date of August second, and then a virtual graduation on August second, if unable to, uh, meet, uh, either of those dates. I would tell you that we are currently in the process for planning, uh, the 2020 summer return, uh, plan, uh, that will entail how we look and the phased approach that we use, uh, to get back to school in the fall, uh, but we'll be making, uh, the announcements on those respective decisions here this Friday. Uh, we have conference calls with Department of Health and state and local, uh, officials in terms of, uh, current regulations and those types of things, so we will be making our announcement on Friday, May fifteenth, for what our, uh, plan, strategy and approach will be for the month of June, and then phase two is obviously the month of July, and we'll be making a, an announcement in mid-June regarding our strategy for the month of July, and then same thing goes for, uh, the month of August, in the middle of July, we'll make an announcement regarding the month of August and, uh, our plan to get back to, uh, regular school operations. I would note that in terms of the 2021 school year, the academic school year, we are currently in the process of taking proactive planning measures for the safety, prevention and response to COVID nineteen, working with public health officials, our school administration and our student health services, basically really working through what our plan looks like upon returning the fall, um, walking through our students' days from seven AM to, you know, late in the evening, uh, what all can we do, what all should we do, uh, really trying to find that balance in, um, what, uh, what is in our best interest to maintain regular operations, uh, so we're currently in the process of, uh, that, that planning for next fall as well. Uh, South Dakota budget update, would note there was recently an announcement, there will be no June special legislative session, uh, the caveat there is that there is potential for a September special legislative session, uh, if I was to lead anything into that, it would be good news in the, the hope that we would be able to utilize maybe some federal stimulus dollars to, uh, make up for some lost revenues, so we don't see any decreases in state aid, um, and or the state budget, so that's my, I guess that would be my, my hope, I don't know if that's true or not, but that would be my hope. Uh, with that being said, it's important to note that, uh, there will be no legislative special session in June, uh, at this point in time, and that potential legislative session shifted to September if necessary. Uh, last thing I would note, all of, uh, all of the days, uh, within the nineteen-twenty academic calendar, uh, during the COVID closure have been included in our academic calendar and the BBS, uh, D facilities are closed for May thirty-first. Uh, with that, I would certainly entertain any questions anyone asks, uh, the only other item that I would just, uh, specify is that on Friday, we will utilize our established platforms of communication to our parents, guardians and community regarding our June plans, so they'll be able to find that on our COVID nineteen information website, as well as the other, uh, platforms and methods we've used to distribute information. So with that, any questions you have, you'd be willing to answer?
Very, very, forty. Hey, um, as far as letting, um, people know, should we, um, uh, let them know about, uh, transportation, as far as rerouting in certain spots, are you getting on that now or what?
Uh, yeah, great, great question, obviously this, uh, COVID nineteen situation has impacted our ability to have a formal open house and or those types of things, however, we are in the process of developing a communication to families, uh, regarding the elimination of in district open enrollment, transportation eligibility, um, in addition to that, uh, some other methods of, uh, providing that, that change or those tweaks to our families, so yes, it is our intent, uh, to be doing that, I would say here through the end of May to the beginning of June, uh, is when we'll see those communications really start to, uh, start to ramp up.
Okay, thank you.
You got it.
Anything else for super nuts, lovers of the night? You read others, thank you very much, super nuts, lovers of the report. Mister Lundberg, anything, um, additional tonight, I would add what we're going to do under dinner dinner?
No, I have it.
All right. Um, anyone from high school, I have a report? No, that's four.
And Mr. Thorpe, I'm just, uh, excited to be back here, reporting, you know, off work than I am, and I just wanted to say thank you to Mrs. Nelson, she didn't have any job live in North, so I owe a lot to her.
Hello, I'm Mike, appreciate your invite.
Uh, Madam-
I appreciate the thanks for your support.
Uh, Madam Chair, this would be a time I would note, um, here at our, our June Board of Education meeting, uh, I will be bringing, uh, administrative recommendation for a stipend for additional work performed by Assistant Principal Nelson in, uh, Mr. Thorpe's absence, um, about one quarter is consistent with the way we've compensated, um, individuals who have covered for maternity leave and other, uh, absences, so just that's an item, I guess I would note at this point in time, but we won't see that until the June, uh, the June eleventh meeting.
Okay, thank you. And we get a little reading from there? I don't think Mr. Brown was on any elementary or more. And? Go ahead. No elementary? And then, um, Mrs. Nelson, I think you're, did I give a wrong bit of something under general business? No, and I don't believe, okay, and I don't believe Mr. Anthony was to our lower on, is that correct? All right, so that takes us to our first item under general business, that I am going to have no actions, nice of presentation only, the Brenn Valley School District 2020, 2021 preliminary budget presentation. Mr. Lundberg, I'm going to hand it over to you. Or Mr. Arthur from Maryland.
Yeah, Madam Chair, uh, before Mr. Lundberg begins, I guess I just want to, uh, to note approximately fifty million dollar annual operating budgets, uh, a tremendous amount of planning and work has gone into this budget, as previously said, you know, we begin the, uh, preparations, November, December with five year plans, and then obviously there are many processes from that point to this point that must be completed in order to get here, so, um, I truly appreciate the great work done by the business office, as well as all of our administration that planning, and, uh, with, without further ado, Mr. Lundberg, give us the, uh, the overview of our fifty million dollar budget approximately.
Very good, thank you. Uh, in your case, I know more members, uh, you were putting, uh, lengthy, uh, page, eight hundred page, uh, doing the details, uh, the budget, uh, I am not going to absorb, I'm not going to concentrate on that, I'm going to concentrate on the top recording document, hopefully it also was included in your second. Hope everybody wanted to follow along with that, I appreciate it. First slide, our parents is a overview of the 2021 budget, uh, again, the general fund is thirty million, five hundred ten thousand revenue, same with expenditures for a balanced budget, capital outlay fund at six million, five hundred fifty thousand dollars worth of this, for that is a three million, nine hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars expenditures for a budget surplus of two million, five hundred eighty-three thousand. Special education fund at revenue of, Jack, for instance, seven million, four hundred forty-seven thousand, there is an expenditures of six million, eight hundred seventy-five thousand for a budget surplus of four hundred seventy-two thousand. Uh, the extra money at revenue expenditures of three million, one hundred sixty-five thousand, the challenge for her is had two million, seven hundred fifty dollars of revenue expenditures. The next page of our report presentation is just an overview of the general fund budget. Gives the details of how it's calculated with, uh, state aid allocations, that are brought down from, uh, the legislative approval, on the sprinting alter in the state department, it's name bracket way, uh, coming out of first student allocation of DSA, the emphasis is on a teacher's salary number rather than a first student allocation, but as you can see by going through the calculation, it really is a first student allocation, it's just puts that business on the teacher's salary number rather than the first student allocation number. In terms of calculation there is how many, uh, TJAMTEs that, who state says, and who they have based on our size or enrollment, you know, projecting enrollment of four thousand five hundred eighty-seven kids next year, you divide that by fifteen, which is on a ratio, fifteen to one in the smaller schools have a twelve to one ratio, which, I do remember that, you can see, that gives them a twenty percent more allocation, but the ratio being three to smaller than our, uh, large school ratio of fifteen to one. Anyhow, we do this with three hundred five point eight FTEs, we have, uh, one hundred seventy ten, some, uh, FTE for our language, language, LEC, uh, losing English proficiency, that's how I phrase it, for a total of three hundred six and a half FTEs. The next calculation in the state department is, they, the state has a instructional staff salary in March, uh, next year is, uh, fifty-one thousand, three hundred sixty-seven dollars. It's a state, uh, law for chief salaries, average teacher salaries, then you add in instructional staff, that's, the state's up here, it's at a twenty-nine percent of the teacher's salary, which is fourteen thousand, eight hundred ninety-seven dollars, it's just under fifteen thousand, or I can tell you, for instance, I have that, uh, benefit plan runs closer to thirty-five percent, rather than twenty-nine percent, which just pushes them beyond everybody else, uh, in the line, give away, that's another one, that would amount to about three thousand dollars, that's just some money there, so instead of fifteen thousand average across the state, it would be eighteen thousand every day, so our school staff salary, that would be sixty-six thousand, two hundred sixty-four dollars, that would be our target, except to me, we have to pay all our teachers, we sound like, um, as we said before, we have three hundred six and a half FTEs, gives us the median twenty-one dollars per day. The company made the overhead, that's just under thirty-five percent for a district, gives us another seven point one million, for our total need, um, for the last, uh, section of twenty-seven million, four hundred two thousand, we take the interval, we can generate local property tax efforts by, uh, one of these that are set, old state, South Dakota, eight million, nine hundred forty-five thousand, and as you know, we have a, we have determined another revenue of equalization, and we are, we, I'm going to use the term lulu, they take away from us seven hundred thirty-three thousand dollars for that, and lulu, they take away seven hundred thirty dollars, so our total C E for two thousand twenty point one school year will be seventy-one million, seven hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. The next slide, show the general fund, broken down by, uh, categories, instructional, thirty of the government budget, eighteen point eight million, which is just under sixty-two percent, support services, category is, and, which is just under thirty-five percent, activity portion, they have a forty-three thousand, which is just under three percent, and the earning retirement is two hundred forty-eight thousand, which is just under- And the earned retirement is $248,000, which is under twenty percent. And then slide, the, uh, the class sizes. Now, I have to tell you that I, uh, prepared this, uh, a number of days ago, number of weeks ago. You know, the base is something on projection. Today, we received the actual spreadsheet of how many kids in these classrooms there are for next year right now. So, be fair with me, I'm just saying, giving the numbers that are the actual right now. Junior grade, we have six sections of seventeen point seven each. Middle grade, we have six full sections of fourteen point five each. First grade, we have sixteen sections of twenty-two point three each. Second grade, we have sixteen sections of twenty-two point seven each. Third grade, we have fourteen sections of twenty-five point three each. And fourth grade, we have thirteen sections of twenty-four point five each. So, he, those are the actual numbers right now. Uh, we will, we're hoping we will grow, uh, with those numbers, so they'll increase as we, as we get through the summer. Based on what I saw in the spreadsheet that was presented to us today and, uh, what our projections are. We're, I think, well, within our prediction numbers, we have twenty-three more elementary students to grow, and we were asking, so, based on this time frame, wherever I may, uh, twenty twenty, the school year that's starting to dawn, it's the twenty twenty. Uh, we're counting that will be all our projections for elementary. Next slide, show of the, uh, total enrollment projections, broken down by elementary, middle school, and high school. Elementary, from last year to this year, we're showing enrollment of sixty-five students. Middle school, first standard, just a group of five kids. High school, we're showing enrollment of eight kids. Our total projected, uh, increase in student numbers for next year is a hundred and sixty. For a total of $4,500,000 students. Last year, we were $4,420,000 students. So, my total projected growth is a hundred and sixty. And we all know that, and we're all, we're all, it's, uh, key to everything in our general special education part of classes. We're accounting for those, those, uh, creatures. Next slide, show the detail on the general fund's expenditures. This category, instructional, uh, support services are recovering at home for a better. You can see the growth age fund, uh, instructional budget went up three point seven percent. Support services went up three point three percent. The early retirement budget went down twenty-one percent. Uh, it's kind of, uh, it, that, we're heading into early retirement. I really wish to be back constantly standing throughout the years. The foundation coming down, causing low challenges for the budget, uh, that now is all developed. It's just way, and I can't dictate, who's going to retire, who's not going to retire this year. That went down sixty-seven dollars. Corporate, corporate, or a lot of four point four percent, thirty-five dollars. For total increase in our general fund, it's nine hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, or three point three percent. The detail of what it increased, nine hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars to the second half of the budget, our foundation payment of $440,000. It was a two point two percent increase across the board, increase in salary every day. An increase in children's substitute salary, my end of my twenty thousand. Better than healthy charge, one of ninety percent for two hundred and ninety-five dollar total. Additional full access, we just talked about one down, sixty-seven dollars. The utilities went up seventy-five thousand. Uh, there's all the electricity line, uh, basically, next year that my end of point, it will be around one million dollars. We have six FTEs of additional staff, including the elementary, one in the intermediate school, and four in the high school. My total of four hundred thousand. We also had three teachroom slots, high impact over revenue for twenty-five thousand dollar total. We have a decrease in our federal funding, uh, a lot of grants, about $200,000 in total. Most of that kind of loan that we talked about before. We had some, and support, we have savings. We are older retired teachers, a lot of younger, higher than we bring in our lessons, a lot less classes, so we have savings there. And about five retirees that we paid about $50,000 each on their salary. And then, also additional staff that we did not necessarily retire, they just leaving. We definitely have some saving in the middle of all. And then we have an increase in critical services supplied from charter, about $88,000, just under $100,000 there. For a total of $976,000 increase in our general fund, or three point three percent. Next slide, show the number of certified FTEs. Uh, as we heard, the average day membership, uh, served enrollment count. The probably going one square, we don't put our ninety-five FTEs, it includes video administration for current enrollment for the total enrollment, four hundred and five hundred eighty-seven. Next slide shows our per people allocation, the percentage increase of our corporate, per student allocation in the state each year. Next year, the per people allocation, based on the format that we went over earlier. Hopefully, we don't have a per student allocation program that is going to increase to just under $6,000, so, five thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars. Second half of this range of the percentage increase of each year, against the past year's two percent. Uh, you can see the majority of the top thing here, right, make two or three percent in the last twenty-five years. With two outliers, one nothing, one blue, and a red third also. The next slide is a slide we've seen before, shows the per people cost among large schools in the state of South Dakota. State's on foot, per people averages, Brandon Valley spent $7,860 per student in the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year. Uh, in Tennessee, all the large schools are getting closer and closer to each other. There are a few things that can separate each school, that would be out of, other revenues, capital, they flexibility use except for differentiate between expenditure to each school. But we always maintain one wall, scanning the state. There are significant difference, it's not a college school district's spending, but, uh, more and more, so you'll see the larger schools get closer and closer to, to people tomorrow. Next slide is the, just for the general fund, money analysis. Of course, at the end of, uh, twenty twenty one school year, was potentially a $6 million, $6 million fund now. Uh, more importantly, I think it was second half of that slide, which is the percentage of expenditures. Uh, this is the more after any issue of power, managing our fund now. As we've heard the last few weeks, two months, a lot of curbers, we've added the curbers and so on and so forth. I think this would be, hopefully, you're going to take a look at twenty percent line, goes across on the back of that slide. You just watched that, uh, curve, the point down, it's, and then it's going to be very, it's also that twenty percent line. It's really, we worked hard to continue up that one, about twenty percent fund now from the general fund. We can see that we have it right there, the fund now is way down, and we've built that up, and it's got to that twenty percent level, which is where we want to be. Next slide, show the revenue from the general fund. And, um, where the money comes from in each category. State sources, they're sixty-one percent. Local passes, they're very two percent. We fear kind of revenue is going one percent. Local sources are only two percent. We do have that capital flexibility to utilize, just under three percent. Uh, this is a six, that's a lot more endeavor than the general fund. Next slide, just a summary of our other revenues. And time goes on, it's becoming less and less, uh, pertinent, and as we've talked before, if you look at the middle proportion on site of bank franchise tax, these variations that we have to enter recommend make it difficult for us to maintain and monitor our, uh, funding or saving funding, because those fluctuations have an effect on our, uh, first year allocations each year of funding from the state. The rules like the bank franchise tax, this current year, in twenty twenty one, as you recall, we received $880,000 bank franchise tax revenue. We're a normal cluster right now, which is our cluster right now, for next year is $550,000. So, not next year, but by the high year, we're going to have, we're going to have to deal with some generation from, uh, making franchise tax, we're going to have this year. When it comes to the state aid fund, who will manage to that, and when I slide, point out, those fluctuations are, are difficult. Of course, uh, they gain a budget. A standard budget throughout their process. The high end of the general fund, we'll be having a capital, we have just under $400,000 expenditures, we will be capitalizing. Play for winter, budget back in March, very, very, very similar to this. List of all the categories, we have transfer, possibility of nine hundred thousand, the general fund is twenty-three percent of the total budget. Technology, just under $100,000, and $925,000, which is twenty-three percent also. The subsidy rule is a month of eighteen percent of the budget. That service amounts to thirteen percent of the budget. And you can see all the other categories, or the major categories of our capital, uh, capital expenditures. And they just said, that service, the next page is $570,000, which is a lot, thirteen percent of the total budget. And debt will pay on that intermediate school, develop the intermediate school in combination of capital, these certificates, and general obligation products. Next one is the special education fund. Formal expenditure budget for, for full year twenty twenty one, six point eight hundred seventy-five thousand. Versus $6,268,000 US current year, the increase of $507,000, eight percent. General, the special education fund, it's going to be up this year eight percent. It's considerably, however, that funding increase, but they do replace those, uh, those categories each, every two or three years. And that is essentially creating and meeting our predator health. And we're also trying to increase our funding on their fund, which will get accomplished a little bit this next year, more than $70,000, but they, uh, so, they're good. Especially in revenue, with our back five, just under forty percent of our revenues from the state, forty-nine percent of low, and eleven percent of credit. Next one is the private asset fund. Uh, as you've heard me talk before, uh, this is a fund that we manage very, very well. Probably the management of our debt service that we have over the time, my tenure here. At the end of twenty twenty one school year, Robert Bennett's elementary school, we need payoff and, uh, reserve balance. And you see, I do not ask as far as that elementary in this chart in this slide, because maybe you might have a lot of the, uh, payback roles. You know, the family year in twenty one, twenty-two school, school year. We're currently paying, uh, we structured the debt, we'll pay the interest out of the, on the proceeds that we receive. We'll pay it out of the votes, and so we do not tax, uh, any, or tax for anybody, the paper that does service all coming out of the proceeds of the first year. And then, in twenty one, twenty-two, so we're going to draw on the tax rules, right there. Yeah, I just, I get the, the problem, uh, or that, but we, in the last twenty-five years, we've been doing a double, our student enrollment. So, it's not like we just had nothing to do, or in this school, to remove, fill our live schools and put up a lot of buildings on this last twenty-five years. We've done, uh, two minimal, I'll back that up, on our tax payers through the line reduction fund, that February, kind of like those expenditures. Next slide, child nutrition, that is. These are kind of regulations that, um, as the managers have put together, we have to have a increase of ten percent. Uh, plus the worth increase of ten percent, we all have our yield. Let's see if the bottom of that slide, those, uh, prices that we're proposing are all an increase of ten cents compared to last year. Uh, revenues and expenditures of budget, two ways, $750,000 each, which is an increase of five point four percent. Could most sign, or they're waiting to that. Next slide, our property valuation, that we have projected for twenty point one. Uh, given T R F, will have quite an increase in our property valuation that projected about $259,000, which is eleven and a half percent, one point eight percent increase from the start of the year. I hope she went up quite a bit, we have experience from, uh, Asher and Earl also. Next slide shows the district evaluation for the last twenty, twenty-five years during and percentage associated to that value each year. We continue working back in the moment where we're growing, have substantial increases in the valuation of ten, eight, eleven, eighty-eight. We have some good increase in the valuation, which is always good for schools. Next slide is the, the, the middle levels for twenty twenty one versus the current year, fifth year, twenty twenty. Middle level, they're now a lot different, uh, down farm, uh, had any color, occupied, closed, first year, they're all, that's the state. They're a whole lot of difference, uh, in the middle level that they set this year there. So, we're all wrong, you know, everything, we have the ability to adjust our state, through the same year we were last. And then, there will not be much change in middle levels. The last slide is the slide that I put in there, property tax, the typical, the whole is Brandon Valley mode, uh, they are tracked. It's a two thousand four. It shows all the increases in valuation throughout that time period, our actual house, Brandon Valley school district. Pay that I do want to point out, uh, two thousand four versus two thousand twenty, the school district tax percentage is around the sixty-one percent, around fifty-three percent this current year. This line of the month shows $2 to $21,000 of the total taxes paid for the school, $972,000 for the city, $842,000 for the county. That's a little weird presenting over the phone, I know. Sure, it was just weird for you, uh, and it is for me, uh. Listening to it over the phone, there's, there's a close to, uh, talking about what we're calling, thank you for your patience, and hopefully you have something on it. If you ever need to call me, or if you have any questions about me right now, uh, whatever you feel comfortable with, I think you want to have the answer.
Anyone have anything to go on for tonight?
Would be awkward sounds, there, but I'll be able to call us later, maybe they have a problem.
No, I was talking myself on mute there for a second, so I'll play all that now, you. So, all right, well, I, Mr. Lundberg said, go ahead. I'm just thinking of running it together, I really appreciate it, uh.
Very welcome.
And honestly, I think, um, having it in front of me and having to listen on the phone, uh, I was probably more focused. Um, and so, again, appreciate all the hard work that goes into it. And if no one has any questions for Ms. Lundberg, or, uh, Superfan at Larson right now, um, like she said, go ahead, she's sending out, if they may come up, if they have any answer, any questions, so. Thank you. All right, with that, we have number two, under our general business, to approve preliminary authorization of the child nutrition services shared services program.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, included in your Board of Education packet, uh, this presentation, I too will also attempt to, uh, walk through that slide by slide, and then at the end, you can enter any questions.
Um, anything in session on that one?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I also, I also was, uh, talking to you on mute, uh, so I apologize for that. Um, yes, item number two, uh, included within your board packet, uh, a, a brief overview of presentation was, uh, provided. I will walk through that with you. Um, note that, uh, the purpose of the CNR shared services program would be to enhance and improve the Brandon Valley Child Nutrition Services Program, all while supporting and providing industry expert leadership and service to neighboring rural school districts. So, ultimately, what we're trying to do here is at no cost to the Brandon Valley School District, and at a minimal cost to participants, is enhance the Brandon Valley School District Child, uh, Nutrition Services Program, and then also provide service to neighboring rural school districts. I would tell you, this has been a couple of years in the making. We've been, uh, we've been working with and talking with some of these, uh, uh, neighboring schools for a couple of years on this potential idea. Uh, I would tell you, first and foremost, the reason that it- Uh, I would tell you, first and foremost, the reason that it is advanced to where it is, and we sit before you looking for approval of, uh, of the program is really about relationships. It's really about, uh, the fact that our CNS Director, Katie Anderson, has served as the National President, uh, and the State President, and has developed working relationships. And many of these smaller rural schools are in a situation where their business managers are serving as CNS Directors. And procurement regulations, federal rules and regulations, so many things have gotten so much more stringent over the course of the last half decade or so, um, that they're really in need of that directorship service. In addition to that, these groups, or this, uh, these neighboring schools or smaller rural schools, they can formulate a buying group, which increases their buying power and allows them to get food at a cheaper rate. So, um, long story short, at no cost to Brandon Valley School District, we are looking to enhance and promote our, our program, all while helping our neighboring rural school districts. So, a general overview. We will obtain a registered dietitian for Brandon Valley School District, and also provide shared directorship services and RD services to participants. The registered dietitian is at no cost to Brandon Valley School District. And ultimately, the smaller rural school districts that are in need of industry expert leadership would receive approximately one day of director time allocated to them, and one day per week of RD time allocated to them, which the Brandon Valley School District ultimately would gain three additional days of CNS support and leadership for their program. So, uh, you can imagine that that RD would enhance our school districts' products and services, also improve our training opportunities within our organization, and then increase community education, nutrition offerings, and services. Uh, participating school districts on listed for, uh, for your review, uh, in alphabetical order, Chester area school district, Colneigan School District, Dubrook area school district, Howard School District, Lake Preston School District, Meadow School District, Montrose School District, Oldham Ramona School District, Rutland School District, and the Sioux Valley School District. I would note, uh, I require each school district to provide a letter of commitment to participate in the shared services program with the annual fee for, uh, $2,000 for the, for the two-year pilot program. And we also inform them of what we believe the approximate cost to continue the program in year three and beyond would be, uh, for the sole purpose of them, uh, committing to it prior to us entering into that formal MOU to know if we could get to that point. So, I would tell you, all of those school districts have committed, uh, to participate. So, when we look at the funding mechanisms and program expenses, uh, really what we are looking at is Share Our Strength is a nonprofit or an organization, national organization, that works to promote, um, uh, child nutrition, uh, in rural areas, as I understand it. And they are looking to provide a $65,000 grant to the group. It would be paid to Brandon Valley School District, and obviously the services would then be extended out to our members. And then, uh, participating school districts would each pay $2,000, uh, giving us $20,000 in rolling. I would note that the grant is for $65,000. Our, our estimated cost for an RD is $60,000. That $5,000 is really contingency dollars for potentially additional training that needs to occur and/or some standardized evaluation to, to see if the program is equated to results. It's a $5,000 contingency, so we get to the end, uh, you can just note that. Also would note, we have a draft MOU from them. Uh, we also have a letter of commitment that we've received for, uh, for that, that grant, uh, funding in the event that we complete the application and make a formal application for that. So, uh, there's been a lot of back, uh, background work on, uh, on the pursuit of that grant, and we appreciate the potential, uh, partnership with Share Our Strength. Year two, again, uh, Share Our Strength Grant, participating school districts pay, uh, a fee for that school year. And then, uh, for year three and beyond, uh, if we are successful and continuation of the program is desired, each program or each school would, uh, participating, if we have the same number of schools, would pay, uh, approximately $8,000 per school, that would be year three and beyond. And again, those programmer expenses are outlined there below. Registered dietitian, $60,000, a shared services directorship stipend of $6,000. Travel expense of $8,000, that would be for the Brandon Valley School District employee to make their rounds, uh, to those respective, uh, partnering districts. And then lastly, is a $6,000 commitment to professional development for our, um, CNS staff. The next slide outlines ultimately the recommendation, and then what our next steps will be, and what you as the Board of Education will see come through, uh, in the, uh, later through May, June, and July. Ultimately, what we are doing is recommending preliminary approval of the CNS shared services program to authorize our formal application, Share Our Strength Grant application, and MOU, the formation of a shared services MOU with our partner, our partner districts, um, and then also initiate that hiring process, uh, with the, uh, with the job description, creation, advertisement, all of those types of things that we'll spend, um, the next few months on as we prepare to bring somewhere else by July 1. Uh, you can see those next steps that are outlined if the, uh, authorization or the approval is given. Um, with that, I would certainly entertain any questions. I do believe that Director Anderson is on the line and would be able to, uh, answer any questions that you would have for her as well. Uh, but with that, Madam Chair, we recommend approval.
Thank you. Any questions, any questions, Superintendent Larson or Lieutenant Anderson?
This is, uh, you, the, I, 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 I do. Now, we have a lot, who does that here, you want to call a family school plus Brandon, or is Brandon doing? And is this person full-time, or is it, are they in position?
Uh, Mr. Oden, do you have any answer to that, or? Well, I can, or you can, or, uh, I can answer, and you can tell me if I'm correct in what I believe is the case. The Brandon Valley School District would be solely responsible for, uh, interviewing and hiring the registered dietitian. Uh, we would not have any input into, or the participating schools would not have any input into the staffing decision of our registered dietitian, just like they have no insight into the staffing of our CNS Director. So, answer is, Brandon Valley School District is solely responsible for interviewing and selecting and hiring the registered dietitian. The second piece would be, it is a full-time, 12-month registered dietitian position. The, uh, contract or the, uh, position would ultimately run the fiscal year, which is July 1 through the last day of June. Did I get it correct, Director Anderson?
You did. Thank you.
Your, can you answer a question for me, or, or neither of you actually? So, long-term, uh, so this is a agreement where I come near to whatever it is. Uh, is it the kind of deal-like resource officer, where eventually we get a bigger war of the, um, trying stuff? Or is this going to be disarrangement all the way through the process? I think since that's a you, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Dr. Telkot, I certainly will speak to that. It is our absolute intent that the total cost of the program would be absorbed by the participants. So if you can see, if we need to, um, if we need to amend the annual participation fee by a few hundred dollars to cover, um, cover expenses for the upcoming year, we will certainly do that. Um, it would be my intent to include that type of beverage in the MOU with our participating districts. Uh, like I said, they're very well aware that, uh, we as the school, we as the Brandon Valley School District are not going to pay any additional dollars for this type of program. Basically, uh, it's presented as a win-win for them. They can't hire a, um, a director and/or a registered dietitian for, um, the fraction of the amount of money. And really, the grant has allowed us to get it off the ground at a very, very minimal cost to them and, uh, get it moving. And then we, we believe that in three years, they'll still be glad to pay the eight to $9,000, wherever it falls, as a, as a member's participant, to cover the cost. No, we do not intend for it to cost us any money, and if it does, we will eliminate the program.
Thank you.
Did I forget that model, okay, some information of what I just wanted to say, it would really never been our school nutrition program also at the same time. As we were in here, this program, in fact, so I just mentioned, you know, some different things with maybe community. We would look to doing community education with families, working 9% in specialized diets, and having a complete nutritional analysis, which, um, would be a wonderful avenue for our program. And so, we, we end up gaining in the end by that service, and they end up doing some of those things.
Thank you. Can you, I don't have any questions, comments? If not, then, um, I would entertain a motion to approve the preliminary child nutrition shared services program. So, who's that?
Sally Plumber.
But it's been a work in a second, from what I can remember?
Jackson.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Forty-eight.
Yeah.
John.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Well, good night, so thank you. I bring up to number 300 general leaders to approve purchase of. Oh, thank you, Mrs. Anderson. Maybe we can get the share of transfer in the future, and that will be covered in the. Uh, sure, I think, uh, I remember this made March. I know, that would have been, um, for those of you who don't know, uh, and I think I may have said it earlier, we, uh, Mrs. Anderson, we're supposed to present the Share Our Strength on our summer program, but we were unable to because of the unintended consequences of the virus that came forward with this, so. All right. Um, with that, there is, next thing you have is our general business, is number three, to approve the change of the plane curriculum delivery model, and apply for the 15,000, 687 and 15 cents of 2020, 2021 school year, and present.
Uh, yeah, thank, thank you, Madam Chair, Superintendent Larson here. I just want to thank Director Nelson for her, uh, hard work through this process. Uh, she has been instrumental in collaborating with our staff, administration, as well as parents, bringing forward the, the spring curriculum delivery, uh, model, and it costs about $58,000. Uh, with that, I'm certainly turning it over to, uh, her to provide you with the, uh, an overview of how she, how she got to the consensus point that she did. Uh, but certainly appreciate, uh, all of her work and effort, uh, in bringing the purchase forward. Ms. Nelson?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Nelson. Yeah, uh, you have a longer than I thought it came along, give you the shorter version. Uh, our curriculum is reviewed on a seven-year cycle. And this year, we give review of plane curriculum, and if you're not familiar with what that is, it's basically the encore and a lauches subject. I have to review the materials that we currently have and are using. The normal departments are such as new supplemental materials, and that is counseling, how, English and science, world languages, TE, and education technology. So the teachers from those six departments evaluate examples from various centers, and they have the major community that. And then they present the fixed elections to a parent committee with representatives from all building. So what's available that's in front of you gets potentially allocated amounts for the adoption, and as we mentioned, it is $57,587 and 15 cents. Any questions that I can answer for you?
Any questions for curriculum or afternoon? Thank you for putting this together, it was, um, easy to understand, I appreciate that. Very good, thank you. If there are any more questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the purpose of the K-12 curriculum for our model of the cost of the funding for the 2020, 2021 school year, at 12:00.
So, we will tell Emily.
Second. All right, there, Ben, first one, a second. Now, roll call, Mr. Anderson.
John.
Yes.
Forty-eight.
Yes.
Plumber.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Well, good night, so thank you. Under general business, under consented data, I would entertain a motion to approve item four, and we try to get for that to be. So, who's that?
Always.
There are now, for the last second, roll call, Mr. Anderson.
Simon.
Yes.
Forty-eight.
Yes.
John.
You know that.
Paul.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Well, good night, so thank you very much, everyone. Under personnel, I am number one, uh, for recommendation, I hired a regular employee for summer 2020, and presented. Do you have any questions on that?
Uh, Madam Chair, Superintendent Larson here. I would just note that, um, there are three individuals that we are, are hired. One individual with, uh, all of the individuals have all years of experience. Uh, but one of the individuals is Evan, Evan Telkot, so he would have, um, he's obviously the son of Dr. Telkot, so that's why it's a loved one.
All right, thank you very much. I would like to welcome to approve grand, what it's not, and employee, employee, and presented, please.
I'm a little corporate.
Second. There are now, for the second, roll call, Mr. Anderson.
Paul.
Yeah.
Jackson.
Yes.
Forty-eight.
And.
John. Let's see.
Paul.
Yes, well done, thank you. Under my sense, personnel, here, I am two, three, ten. I would entertain a motion to approve those of today's, tonight, please.
John.
Always.
There are now, for the second, roll call, Mr. Anderson.
Over.
Yeah.
Forty-eight.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes, well done, thank you. There are ten remain, and only one are returning, we are there for your review. Um, under communication, there are building permitting notifications there for your interest or if you're interested. There are further thank you notes in board of education. There are lower, thank you also, Board of Education, um, and most, all of them have to do a, a great one for being continued to take through the COVID pandemic and stressful situation, so. Thank you, um, for that. That leads us to the formal board report, does anyone have a formal board report, and a like sharing one? You're ready, guys. That takes us to the end of our scheduled meeting, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Go move, Paul.
Sure you do, man.
There are any others in the second, Bo McHawson, number?
Paul.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Doctor.
Yes.
Forty.
Yeah.
Paul.
Yes. Meeting adjourned, thank you very much, everyone, for coming, and continue to stay low.